Lori White, I'm the FDOT Project Manager and would like to welcome you to tonight's public hearing for the US-90 Multi-Use Trail Project Development and Environment or PDE study. On behalf of FDOT, I would like to thank you for your interest in this project and attendance this evening. Tonight, I'm supported by representatives from FDOT District 3 as well as our consulting team. This public hearing is being held in person at the State Bridge Suites in Tallahassee, Florida, and virtually through GoToWebinar. I would also like to take a moment and thank any elected officials who are in attendance for tonight's public hearing. We appreciate your interest and involvement in this project. We will now turn our attention to the narrated presentation.
The Florida Department of Transportation welcomes you to the hybrid public hearing for the US-90 Multi-Use Trail Project Development and Environment, or PDE study. This project is identified by the following financial project identification number: In addition to the team members in attendance this evening, representatives from the FDOT Right-of-Way Department are also available. They will be here after the hearing to answer questions you may have about right-of-way acquisition. A transcript of all oral proceedings is being recorded and will become part of the official public record for this project. Before we begin the presentation, here are a few details to help you participate in this hybrid public hearing through GoToWebinar. On your screen, you should see an information window similar to the one shown on the right. All virtual attendees are in listen-only mode for the duration of the hearing. Responses to written comments submitted during online registration, as well as those provided at the in-person event, will be made available at a later date. If you're experiencing technical difficulties, please email anna.linehan@atkinsrealist.com. In the event of technical difficulties during the hybrid public hearing, please stay online while we work to resolve the issue. A recording of this GoToWebinar will be available on the project website three days after the hybrid public hearing. You may also contact the FDOT Project Manager by phone or email after the hearing to request additional information. To be included in the official public record, all comments must be submitted or postmarked by Monday, December 1st. Draft engineering and environmental documents were made available for public review from Thursday, October 23rd through Monday, December 1st, at the East Side Branch of the Leroy Collins Leon County Public Library, located at 1583 Pedrick Road in Tallahassee. Project documents are also available for viewing this evening at the in-person public hearing. The proposed project is being developed in accordance with the Civil Rights Act of 1964. Under Title VI of the Civil Rights Act, public participation is solicited without regard to race, color, national origin, age, sex, religion, disability, or family status. This hybrid public hearing was advertised in the Tallahassee Democrat, the Florida Administrative Register, and was noticed consistent with the federal and state requirements. Persons wishing to express concerns about Title VI may do so by contacting either the FDOT District 3 office in Chipley, or the FDOT Central Office in Tallahassee. This contact information is displayed on the screen, at this hybrid public hearing, and in the handout. The Florida Department of Transportation is conducting a PDE study to evaluate the potential construction of a multi-use trail along US-90, from Edenfield Road to the Jefferson County line in Leon County. The project length is 13.6 miles. The study location is shown on the map with the project limits highlighted. There are five components of a PDE study. The US-90 Multi-Use Trail Study began in mid-2023. In early 2024, FDOT completed the Engineering and Environmental Analysis Phase. A virtual project update was provided in mid-2024. The project is now in the fourth phase of the PDE process, the Hybrid Public Hearing. The purpose of tonight's hearing is to share information about the proposed improvements included in the preferred alternative, the conceptual design, and the alternatives under consideration. We will also discuss the potential benefits and disadvantages related to social, economic, and environmental impacts on the community. Public input received during this hearing will be considered as FDOT prepares the final study documents. The study will conclude in early 2026. Following the completion of the PDE study, the next phases in the transportation development process include design, right-of-way acquisition, and construction. Right-of-way acquisition and construction are currently unfunded. A PDE study is the formal process that develops and compares alternatives to determine a preferred action that meets project needs, while minimizing impacts to the social, natural, cultural, and physical environments. Engaging the public is a key component of the process, and is required by the National Environmental Policy Act. The purpose of the project is to accommodate a wide range of non-motorized modes along US-90, improve pedestrian and bicycle safety, and support the development of the shared-use non-motorized Sun Trail Network within Leon County. This project is needed to provide Sun Trail Network System linkage along US-90, from Pensacola to Jacksonville, to provide alternative transportation mode choices, and to improve safety by separating pedestrians from the roadside. From Edenfield Road to Apex Drive, the project corridor currently includes 5-foot sidewalks and 4-foot bike lanes on both sides of US-90. As part of the preferred alternative, a new 12-foot multi-use trail is proposed adjacent to the eastbound side of the roadway. The proposed improvements will fit within the existing right-of-way. The US-90 Bridge over the Alford Arm Tributary, located between Edenfield Road and Apex Drive, currently includes 5-foot sidewalks and 4-foot bike lanes on both sides of the roadway. To accommodate the proposed 12-foot multi-use trail, a portion of the bridge will be reconstructed. This partial reconstruction will expand the existing sidewalk on the eastbound side to support the preferred alternative. The proposed improvements will fit within the existing right-of-way. From Apex Drive to Wadesboro Road, there are currently no dedicated bicycle or pedestrian facilities. As part of the preferred alternative, a 12-foot multi-use trail is proposed along the eastbound side of US-90. The proposed improvements will fit within the existing right-of-way. From Wadesboro Road to Veterans Memorial Drive, the project corridor currently lacks dedicated bicycle and pedestrian facilities. The preferred alternative proposes a 12-foot multi-use trail along the eastbound side of US-90. To construct the proposed improvements, approximately 20 feet of additional right-of-way will need to be acquired. The US-90 Bridge over Black Creek is located within the section of the project corridor between Wadesboro Road and Veterans Memorial Drive. The preferred alternative proposes a 12-foot multi-use trail along the eastbound side of the bridge. This new structure will be constructed separately, and will not impact the existing US-90 bridge. To accommodate the proposed improvements, approximately 20 feet of additional right-of-way will need to be acquired. From Veterans Memorial Drive, to west of State Road 59, the project corridor currently lacks dedicated bicycle and pedestrian facilities. The preferred alternative proposes a 12-foot multi-use trail along the eastbound side of US-90. The proposed improvements will fit within the existing right-of-way. The US-90 Bridge over Patty Creek is located within the section of the project corridor between Veterans Memorial Drive and west of State Road 59. The bridge currently lacks dedicated bicycle and pedestrian facilities. The preferred alternative proposes a 12-foot multi-use trail structure along the eastbound side of the bridge. This new structure will be constructed separately, and will not impact the existing US-90 bridge. The proposed improvements will fit within the existing right-of-way. The section of the project corridor from west of State Road 59 to the Jefferson County line currently lacks dedicated bicycle and pedestrian facilities. The preferred alternative includes a crossing over US-90 near the beginning of the segment, approximately 0.6 miles west of State Road 59. After crossing US-90, the preferred alternative includes a 12-foot multi-use trail along the westbound side of US-90, continuing to the Jefferson County line, where it will terminate at the Lake Micasuki Boat Ramp. The proposed improvements will fit within the existing right-of-way. To minimize impacts on wetland areas, the preferred alternative may include boardwalk-style trail structures where appropriate. As part of the study, FDOT evaluated the potential social, cultural, natural, and physical effects of the proposed project. The features listed are just some of the types of analyses included in this PDE study. Avoidance or minimization of impacts to these features is a key consideration. Impacts that cannot be avoided will be mitigated. There is one area of the project with the potential need for additional right-of-way. The section of the project corridor from Wadesboro Road to Veterans Memorial Drive will require approximately 7.47 acres of right-of-way across 34 parcels. The right-of-way needs for this project will not result in any business or residential A Cultural Resources Assessment Survey was conducted for this PDE study to identify cultural resources and assess their eligibility for listing in the National Register of Historic Places. One site is listed in the National Register of Historic Places, and 28 historic resources were identified but not eligible for listing. No significant impacts are anticipated as a result of this project. The project area was examined for publicly-owned properties that may be affected under Section 4F of the Department of Transportation Act of 1966, which applies to transportation projects that use publicly-owned parks, historic sites, and wildlife refuge. Potential Section 4F resources identified in the study area include Billingsley Farm and Mahan Drive. If applicable, FDOT is pursuing a Section 4F de minimis finding for these potential impacts. This hearing provides opportunity for public comment on the project's proposed impacts to the activities, features, and attributes of these Section 4F resources. Federal and state protected species may be present, or utilize areas within the project. The project may affect, but is not likely to adversely affect, the red cockaded woodpecker, wood stork, tri-colored bat, and eastern indigo snake. The project will have no adverse effect on the gopher tortoise and the branch tier-thum. The proposed trail will potentially impact approximately 0.94 acres of wetlands. There are no practical alternatives to constructing the trail in wetland areas due to the presence of wetlands in the existing and proposed right-of-way. FDOT will mitigate the wetland impacts resulting from this project's construction to meet state and federal requirements. A location hydraulics report was prepared for this project to identify potential 100-year floodplain encroachments resulting from the proposed multi-use trail. Floodplain impacts, if any, will be fully compensated for. A contamination screening evaluation report was prepared for this project to identify contamination concerns within the study area. The results of the contamination screening identified one high-risk site, seven medium-risk sites, 10 low-risk sites, and four no-risk sites. These sites will be further evaluated in the design phase to identify options to avoid, minimize, or mitigate contamination involvement. The evaluation matrix compares the preferred project alternative to the no-build alternative, and is on display and available for review. The total project cost for the preferred alternative is estimated at approximately $52.49 million in present-day costs. All project-related costs are included in this total estimate. There is currently no funding for right-of-way or construction. This concludes the formal presentation. FDOT is seeking comments from the public concerning the potential effects on the activities, features, and attributes that may result from the construction of a multi-use trail along US-90. After the comment period has been closed and your input has been considered, a decision will be made, and the final PDE document will be sent to the FDOT Office of Environmental Management, which, based on the Memorandum of Understanding signed with the Federal Highway Administration on May 26, 2022, has approval authority on this project granting location and design concept acceptance.
Okay, we will now call upon those who have turned in speakers' cards. If you would like to speak and have not filled out a speaker's card, please raise your hand now, and we will get you a card. As I call your number, please step up to the microphone and state your name and address before making your comment. If you represent an organization, municipality, or other public body, please provide that information as well. We ask that you limit your input to three minutes. Please come to the microphone so that the court reporter will be able to get a complete record of your comments. Please note that we will not respond to your comments and questions today, but we will respond in writing at a later date. So, Speaker number one, please come to the microphone.
Hi. My name is Pam Hamer. I'm at 4425 Rapid Pond Road in Tallahassee. I'm a certified barbers, and I am the certified barbers that takes care of the beautiful allay on at least 12 of the miles that are going to be impacted by this project. And I walk all 12-plus miles at least three times a year, and pruning and taking care of the crate myrtles, along with the crew. I'm really concerned for this great myrtle allay. It's beautiful, it's historic, and I believe that a 12-foot-wide path is impractical in a significant portion of the corridor, the 13-plus mile corridor that you're proposing. And I see that Section 7.20 Special Features of your study proposes preserving the crate myrtles to, and I quote, "the greatest extent possible." Now, that's very subjective, and having worked for the state for 15 years, I understand what that means. I'm not sure that the rest of the state of Florida understands what that means. But basically, to the greatest extent possible, so if you're impacting crate myrtles and you're trying to save them, are you going to make a less than 12-foot-wide corridor? What does this actually mean? And do you have a replanting schedule for the trees that you're going to impact? Do you have a possibility of using Flexi-Pave or another non-horse surface for part of this so that you don't have to put asphalt down in a possibly 12-foot-wide corridor on this trail to nowhere, basically? My husband and I are also avid bicyclists and equestrians. Between us, we have eight different types of bicycles and four horses, so we're not against bike paths, so to speak, but we are blessed with quite a number of places to ride, and there are bike paths along 90. If maybe the speed of cars were monitored and controlled a little bit better, things would be a little safer, and we can save the environment and our beautiful allay of crate myrtles as it exists now. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Okay, Speaker number two.
Hi, my name is Robin Preston. I bought my house back in 1986. At that time, I was in the name of Mitchell. And myself and the neighbors to the east of me in Pioneer Village, on the eastbound side, south side of Mahan, are a very steep curve. Our driveways do this. If you take that huge swath for this wonderful trail to nowhere, I will not be able to get into my house. That is not an exaggeration. When I first got this, I called two years ago and was told, "Oh, we know all about Pioneer Village. It's going to cross over to the north side." And every single thing that I have ever seen says, "No, it's not. It's going to be on my side." I want an engineer to come to my house and look at my driveway and tell me how I'm going to get into my house, because already I have trucks, deliveries, that will not turn into my driveway because it is so steep and so short, and you're going to take more of it. This is not fair, it's not right, it's not necessary. We've got the Greenway one street over, we've got the beautiful Heritage Trail, we've got Ghost Pond. We don't need a trail on a 55 mile-an-hour highway where people already will ram right up my tailpipe when I'm trying to turn off into my driveway. I already have to go onto the shoulder so I am not creamed, and I won't be able to do that because there might be a bicyclist, or a pedestrian, or a horse, and I will have to stop. And I will get rear-ended. I absolutely will get rear-ended. This is not right. And personally, I resent that Jefferson County's commissioner went around door-to-door and asked the people who lived there, and they all said, "No, no, no, we do not want this." And Jefferson County said, "No, we're not doing this because the residents don't want it." And Leon County has not done me that service. Leon County has never talked to me. They've never looked at my driveway or my neighbor's driveways, and they're proceeding with this like it's a great idea. It's not a great idea. It's a dumb idea. I'm not against sidewalks, I'm not against walking trails, I love walking trails in Tallahassee. I am against access to my home being destroyed for no reason. That's what we're against.
Thank you for your comment. Speaker number three.
My name is James Mann, 3329 Huntington Drive, Tallahassee, Florida. I've been cycling since 1986, and have been a lot of places as far as riding bikes are concerned. I'd definitely like to see more trail, there's no few ways about it. When they were building, when we were trying to get built the St. Mark's Trail, frankly, you would have thought that Hotel Hound was coming down that trail, and that's been a very successful trail, but it's had some additions to it. But as far as trails where they're, even if it's out in the back like this would be, it would still be a helpful thing to have. I've been on Highway 90 before. It's a Highway 90, there's a group called Adventure Cycling, and there's a lap that starts in San Diego and winds up in St. Augustine, and in Florida, Highway 90 is part of that. I did that back in 2006, I believe it was. Anyway, that, I frankly think it would be good to have it. I think they would have to take into consideration some of the things that this lady brought up as far as what would need to be done, and it could be done. But that's basically all I've got to say about it. I think my part, but neither here nor there. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your comment. Speaker number four.
My name is Mary Jane Davis. We live at 10100 Mahan Drive on Highway 90. We would love to have a multi-use trail along Highway 90. Trails of this nature encourage families to be more active, which is so important in improving health. As a retired physician, I'm very aware of the importance of physical activity in people's overall health and well-being, and we certainly have a huge problem as a nation with inactivity and the obesity epidemic. Anything we can do to promote people being more active, especially in a multi-use type trail, I think that's highly beneficial to health. From a practical standpoint, we've lived in other parts of the country and have lived on or near multi-use trails, then it actually enhances your property value to have a multi-use trail access. We've experienced that firsthand, and I think that gets underappreciated. Lastly, any day that I am coming home in a car to my property, I pass by a white bicycle from a deceased bicyclist along Highway 90, and I think we always need to keep in mind the importance of safety and the prevention of accidental death during exercise. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you for your comment. Speaker number five.
I'm Donald Wise, 1601 Highland Drive. My acreage patches to five acres I own, 5235 Mahan Drive, which basically puts me at the trailhead at Edenfield, I'm a book trailhead, where I have a large sidewalk, well-used sidewalk out there, so I'm neither for nor against this. My question to FDOT, though, is where are the people going to park at the trail? That's all I got.
Thank you. Speaker number six. Speaker number six. Mr. Matt. Number six.
I couldn't hear anybody else talk.
Sorry.
I hope it was all vague. And I don't know what, hey, I work for an asphalt company, we actually built a couple miles of it down there in 98. Regulations are incredibly tough, and it's happening, but ambulances have to be able to drive down possibly. There's a bunch of dead earth, baby. Nobody ever thinks about when a tree falls, somebody's going to have to do it. Nobody's talking about the maintenance of this stuff. In your subdivision, in your roads, we're coming through and doing model passengers all the time, okay? There's tons of maintenance that hasn't even been talked about. This is going to be expensive to taxpayers, and we're trying to drop our taxes. I don't know about you people, I know I do. Our taxes have all gone up, and they're going to keep going up. They're not going to get that. The avid bicyclists, yes, we love them, they're plugging up our roads all the time. Those we've got, school buses, which we love, and the garbage trucks. For some reason, garbage trucks go out about 7:30 and 3:00. That's one we're trying to drive avid bicyclists, driving down 59. They're going down roads that take you 45 mile an hour. The bike trail we built down at 98, you can't do 45 mile an hour. That's for someone, I hit a gentleman right there. That's for the retired people, for, I swear to goodness, the mothers are out there pushing buggies, that four-wheelers, and you name it, that's what runs on the bike trail. I built a bike trail in Monticello, it's two miles from a park to the school that's closed completely. It was a wonderful thing. Yeah, wonderful. The state of Florida had millions of dollars to throw in these grants for these bikes. I did a bike trail in Midway. Never heard of it? No, no one ever sees it. Go down, go down, you guys will all drive down 90, so does everybody else at Madison County that works in Tallahassee. Monticello's dying, everyone is working in Tallahassee. Our roads are so [BLEEP], we have to take I-10. I live two driveways from the whole landing on there. How long is this thing going to take? I'd probably be retired before it's done. Once they start doing those bridges and they put those beautiful aluminum steel bridges across, you can't believe how much those things cost. And the trick, the trick decking across these things so we can run our bikes and, you know, free-beat and walk down that thing this long. If we need four lanes going to Monticello, we don't need a bike trail in two lanes. What are we going to do with the crate myrtles? Everybody drives. Everybody drives home. The people that live on this road then drive home. We all go, "You know what? We've got the best cotton pickers. Drive going home, don't we?" He does the pretty drive. When them great myrtles are blowing, you can't beat it. They're gone. We're not building that bike path out there because I know we'll get a couple miles of it. We're going to rip every one of them. One so. So, a couple vagrants have a little straight line to walk, but they won't have to walk up on the road. There won't be bikers out there. Quit it. There's going to be a bunch of retired people, a bunch of side-by-sides in gold cars because I'll be one of them. It's going to be a quick run for me to go see Eric up at the old town. And that's awful. I swear to goodness, you've got to think about this. Tori, it's wonderful you came here. Where do you live?
Chippeland.
Tell you what, everyone that's in charge of this thing has no idea what we do every day. They don't understand the path that we're taking. If we were building that bike path in their neighborhood, they'd be fine just like a handful of us. You want to ride your bike? Go ride your bike. There's plenty of bikes. There's plenty of roads that are unplugged. Quit plugging up 59 when we're trying to get to work. And pick up your bike. Everybody does. We've got a wonderful thing down there. What is it? It's a, is it a bomb road? Or no, no, it's a, it is. It's a small road, isn't it? Down there, we have a beautiful park. Everybody parks in there. We get our bikes out and they go right up Cantico, which is this wide. And there's five wide green lights. You're going to lose on a bike. But we can do it every day. And you tell me that they need the bike trail? They will never ride the bike trail. Them guys have the $1,000 outfits on it. I know. I've done their driveways. They tell me about it. They don't want no bike trail. The guys that are real, the women that are real bicyclists, they're doing as fast as they go if they want to do 25 miles as quick as they can. They're not going to do it on a beautiful little, seedy little asphalt path with killing our roads and our vehicles. It's money we're throwing, and it's taxpayer money that we're throwing at this. Okay, it's our money. Is that what we really need? Tell them. Think about this. Hey, appreciate your time. We just don't need that. We really don't.
Okay. The last speaker card I have is speaker number 11.
Hi there. My name is Jeff Billingsley. Presidential address 5002 Carrickar Drive. I'm speaking on behalf of the property owner 364 Yoker Lane, which is my father. We continue to object to the project in general as well as proposed routing of the trail for reasons outlined in previous correspondence with staff, including but not limited to impact to a natural historic registered property when an alternative routing does exist. My question specifically is to address the fact that there are constrained areas of right-of-way on at least two sections of Mahan Drive. It mentioned in the presentation tonight that right-of-way acquisition was not funded for this project. It is my understanding, based on discussion with staff, that the Sun Trails program does not use or is not allowed to use the powers of eminent domain to acquire right-of-way for bike trails. If that is correct and given that there are right-of-way constrained sections of this roadway, without voluntary willing sellers of the needed right-of-way, will this project move forward? Thank you.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to speak? Okay. At this time, we are going to turn it over to our online moderator, Anna, who will now call upon our online participants who have requested to speak.
Thank you, Tori. For those wishing to offer public comments virtually, I will call your name and then I will unmute you. Please make sure to also unmute your microphone on your end using the GoToWebinar control panel as shown on the slide. When it is your turn to speak, please state your name and address before making your comment. If you represent an organization, municipality, or other public body, please provide that information as well. Again, before you speak, make sure you are not self-muted. Click the microphone to make it green. If you did not ask to speak when you registered for the hearing but would like to do so now, please use the Raise Your Hand feature, and I will call on you once I have heard from those who have previously registered. We ask that you limit your comments to three minutes. And before you speak, make sure you are not self-muted, which you can do again by clicking on the microphone icon in the control panel. I have two people registered to speak that I do not see online, Betsy Barfield and Donna Griesco. If you are online under a different name, please raise your hand now. We'll start with our first speaker, Saiyum Manana Sthami Somansundram. I will unmute you now. And you can unmute yourself and make your comment. Remember to unmute yourself to make your comment. Okay, raise your hand if you would like to come back and make a comment. The next speaker that I will unmute will be Eric Draper. Eric Draper, feel free to unmute yourself and make your comment. If you would like to make a comment, please use the Raise Your Hand feature, and I will come back to you. Our next virtual commenter is Adam Morgan.
Can you all hear me?
I can hear you, Adam. Go ahead.
Hey, my name is Adam Moran. My address is 1816 Atlantis Place in Tallahassee. First off, I want to state that I'm speaking in a personal capacity, even though I am a professional planner. Wanted to state that prioritizing bicycle and pedestrian infrastructure is vital to the social, economic, environmental, and public health of all communities, even rural and suburban ones. I grew up in this area off Buck Lake Road, and I'm thrilled that this project is underway. And I hope it makes it to the finish line and it can be the long game. Over the years, I've seen many people walking and biking along this stretch of roadway as we can all attest for those of us who've lived out that way. Some for recreation. There are a lot of recreational bicyclists. But others, and I think this is important to emphasize, others, because it's their only means of transportation. And I want to emphasize that. This is super important to provide for people who do not use cars for transportation. The public right-of-way belongs not just to cars but to all members of the public, no matter what mode they're on. Taxpayer money should be focused on this kind of infrastructure, which is, the amount is miniscule compared to the amount of money that's wasted on overbuilt roadway networks that are extremely dangerous and do not actually help congestion. In terms of the actual infrastructure for this particular plan in the project area, from what I've seen, I'd like to encourage a few tweaks on the preliminary design. In areas where there are bike lanes, I think it's important that every effort be made to provide physical separation from automobile traffic. Providing bike lanes is literally the bare minimum effort to ensure safety of cyclists. We all know cyclists are not really protected in bike lane designs. To design this correctly with human life as the priority, physical separation, whether that's distance or physical barriers, are needed. At the very least, please consider providing flexible delineator posts that should be installed to separate the bike lanes from the cars. In similar vein, regarding the design of some bridges in the project area, it appeared that there were concrete barriers that were placed between the pedestrian and bicycle lanes. I think it should be common practice at this point to instead provide a concrete barrier between car lanes and the bicycle lanes. As a major injury, it is a lot less likely to occur when a pedestrian is hit by a cyclist compared to when a cyclist is hit by a car, which in this area would be going 55 to probably 75 miles per hour. Overall, I'm thrilled that this project is occurring, and I want to ensure that it's known that there are supporters of this project. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. At this time, I see no more hands raised.